Council chambers, aren't they nice?
Yes, they are.
At this time, Tony, do we have a quorum, please?
Mayor Moss, with all council members are present.
Okay, thank you. This time, we're gonna have the pledge and invocation by Pastor John Sherman. If you'd come forward, please, and remain standing for the pledge. Pastor Sherman.
Let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, if you'll join your hearts with me, let's pray. So, Abba Father, we do bow our heads and our hearts before you, and we acknowledge that you are God. This creation is yours. The earth is the Lord's and everything in it, the world and all who live in it. So, all these people are yours. You made them for a purpose, for a divine purpose, and you made them uniquely. You've gifted them uniquely. And what a privilege, especially, I pray for our leadership here as a city council, that they get to use their gifts and their talents and their knowledge and their experience for the good, for the flourishing of our city. And so, I pray for a continued spirit of wisdom, of unity, of collaboration, as they work together to help our city continue to flourish and grow as you would prosper us. So, would you grant that, please, and ask it in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit? And everybody agreed and said?
Amen.
Pastor Sherman, will you give them a plea?
Yes, sir.
You haven't heard that about him. The county whip has a proclamation honoring Trinity Bible Church Pastor Sherman. We have gathered today to recognize Pastor John Sherman, pastor emeritus of the Trinity Bible Church after 24 years of service in the head pastor position. Sherman came to be pastor of Trinity Bible Church in 1999. He has around 75 members of the congregation, and today, the congregation is about 800 members strong, including his wife Beth and children Emily and Jacob, who have served faithfully beside him. He is known for calling those in his flock beloved after Philippians 4:1, and has used his gift to teach and preach God's word, comfort people in times of loss, and to encourage people in any given situation. Sherman has tirelessly served in his community, both publicly and privately, including the Grace House Ministries, where he sits on the border of Correcton, the center of the Capitol. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Doyle Moss, congratulate Pastor Sherman for his outstanding service to the members of Trinity Bible Church and the community as a whole, and urge the Willow Park community to join me and with Pastor Sherman as well in his new role as pastor emeritus of Trinity Bible Church. That's all. You nailed it, man.
We had some inside information.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Just a fun part of my job. Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm getting there. All right. First item on the agenda is to approve the city council meeting minutes of January 24, 23. No, they're not here.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from January 24, 2023.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. All in favor? Thank you. I can see everybody. That's great. Item number seven, to approve the city's 22, 2022, 2023 first quarter financial report.
Good evening. An honor, I guess, one of the first people to get to present here at the new facility. So, beautiful facility. So, in front of you, you have the first quarter financial reports. Again, I'll try to point out some, just highlight a few areas, some things to bring your attention. Good starts of the year again, you know, first quarter, strong revenue in terms of, compared to budget, compared to last year, expenses are in line. Again, revenue, good start, and you can kind of see the totals there. And just looking at that bottom section on page one, a few things to point out. You look at your tax revenue. So, sales tax, you're up 135,000 from last year. So, the same, that's something we'll touch on later tonight, but your sales tax growth has even exceeded, I think, our expectations coming into the year. And obviously, it's been on a great trend the last two to three years. So, that's continuing to grow. Your M&amp;O is down a little bit from last year, 154,000. Again, that's a timing thing in terms of when people make their payments. So, it's not a concern whatsoever. But when you look at the numbers, you say, why are we down? It just, again, the timing on when we're getting some of those tax payments. Another thing, so if you look at other revenue, you see that's up 150,000 from last year. Couple of things driving that. So, your, our interest income, we're actually, you know, we think rates were so low there for a few years, we're getting nothing on interest. We're up 65,000 in the first quarter, just on interest income. So, we're actually starting to get some pretty good interest. Yeah, I think we're about 4% or more on some of those Techstar accounts. So, with the cash you have in there, that adds up a little bit, and you're seeing some of that. And then, the resource officer that was hired, I think, helped with the school, we received the full payment for the year in the first quarter. So, you see that full payment. Obviously, our costs through the payroll will be paid out during the year, but that's recognized under that category. It's just kind of pointing that out. And then, on the expense side, you see the personnel, we're up 80, about 185,000 from last year. So, again, a couple of things on that. There's two new positions that added to that. So, you had city engineer, building official, and then also, there was that one-time payout that y'all had approved on the sick comp time that was done in the first quarter. So, again, when you're looking at that, just be aware, there's some anomalies there as to why that, when you're looking to last, compared to last year, why that number is high. So, that's kind of high level, again, on the general fund. You're up 514,000 year-to-date. So, again, a strong start to the year, which you'd expect. You're starting to get some of your tax revenue in. Not any major expenses that have gone out. Again, your biggest cost is your personnel. On your water and wastewater, so water, you know, user charges, you're up 120,000. Wastewater is up 62. So, again, a good start. You know, with new users, you're expecting to continue to see that number decline, and so hopefully, it'll keep going that way. So, we're seeing that in terms of the revenue that you're getting in there. Those are the main things. So, you can see overall, you're up, you know, 338,000 roughly between those two funds. So, those are the main things from a high level on the P&amp;L. I did want to point out a couple of things, too, on just your, when you look at your cash balances, so they're on the second page. We did authorize a transfer that was in the budget from water to wastewater. So, if you look, based off the cash available, there's a large debt payment that's due here this month. So, the 400,000, we're gonna have to transfer that over to make that payment. So, again, that was expected, but when you look at the cash balances and the debt payment that's gonna be needed there, that's something that we will do or have done already. Another thing I was gonna point out is just, if you look at your operating cash in the general fund, we're at 1.4 million. A year ago, we were about 1.1. And so, just say, okay, we've built up some reserves in there, which, obviously, with the ESD transition and some other costs, you know, with this facility, things like that, keep that in the back of your mind. Say, okay, we do have some reserve, some extra, that has been built up over the last couple of years in terms of cash position there. So, it gives you a little flexibility, you know, down the road to make some decisions there. And then, just a cup, one other thing I was gonna point out is, you do have some cash, and I know we touched on these before, but you have some, it's all earmarked, but you have some cash accounts that, things that you can spend for certain things. So, the CLF, RF, that grant money that y'all have, there's still 947,000 in there. So, that's, again, something that, you still have a few years to spend that, but that's something that would need to be spent. The tourism fund is up to about 264,000. So, we're, again, we're starting to get more revenue on that from that hotel. So, that's specific purposes, but something to look at. And then, also, we do have that first responder. There's been some money from that on the tournament and the charitable tournament y'all had. And so, I know that's something, just know that that has built up quite a bit over the last couple of years. So, just know there's some cash in there for, again, those specific uses that are allowed to use on that. Those are the main things I had. Any questions on anything on the financials, as y'all look through those, or anything we talked about?
What was our 1Q number on hotel sales tax or hotel hot tax?
I don't know the revenue number on that.
About 50, probably?
I would say something like that. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it was, because you think, in September, we were at 212 on the bank account. So, yeah, we were about 50 last quarter. So, and it's probably gonna stay steady or even increase, you know, each quarter, because I think that hotel's done pretty well, and they're paying every quarter, which we had some issues with the old hotel actually collecting on that.
The CLF, RF fund?
Yes.
Do we have a certain time to spend that, or?
You do. Off the top of my head, I think it's 2025, but I can double-check those dates. But there are, there are some specific dates when that does have to be spent by. I want to say there's, you have about another year or two at least to get that done. The biggest one historically, I know we did, you know, is water and wastewater infrastructure is one of the uses that you can use it for. And I know y'all did the, was a lift station on the south side. Yeah, so that was, that, you spent some there, I think roughly 300, 350,000 maybe. But again, you have, obviously, quite a bit more that would need to be used for those purposes.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to accept the first quarter report, please?
Make a motion that we accept the first quarter report for 22, 23. Wait, is that right?
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight, discuss and take action to approve the 2022 racial profiling report. Chief Franklin. Captain Franklin.
I'll go by anything. So, Mayor, Council, what you should have in your packet is a copy of the racial profiling report. We're required by the Code of Criminal Procedure to give a report on the racial profiling numbers and the data on every calendar year from all traffic, motor vehicle traffic stops. Then, that data is then analyzed and compiled into the report, and then we review it to see if there's any instances of racial profiling within the department. We reviewed that data and that information, and I can tell you that there is no patterns or no instances of racial profiling from the officers in Willow Park. So, that report shows all the data and all the information. I'll be happy to answer any questions or anything you may have on that report.
Any questions for Captain Franklin?
Is this the yearly one that's uploaded into Teaklids?
It is, yes.
Do we have a motion to accept the report?
Make a motion that we accept the racial profiling point, uh, report for 2022, as presented.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Captain Franklin. Project updates. El Chico Pump Station, Fort Worth Water. Michelle.
As requested, an update on the Fort Worth project. Compared to what I gave y'all last week for your packets, the electrical is now complete as far as the plugs, lights, all of that. There's some minor stuff that has to be done. Electrical will be done this week. The sewer line is finally finished installed on El Chico, and they will come back and put concrete. Assuming it doesn't rain anymore, probably about two to three weeks. The pumps are installed. They were tested for rotation and alignment last week. The plan is to run a simulation on the vertical frequency drives sometime late this week, first part of next week, just to make sure that they see no issues with them running. Just so y'all are aware, the tank may be leaking a little bit. They installed it during the snowstorm right around Christmas or snow. It showed signs of leaking then. They came back in, they actually adjusted it, and then, over the weekend with the rain and stuff, it looks like it's either leaking or we're getting a bunch of runoff from somewhere. So, they will start investigating that towards the end of the week. SCADA is nearly finished. We will actually be online with it within the next two weeks. And the landscaping should be finished around mid-March.
Very good.
Any questions?
Great update. Really excited about this one.
What's the delivery date to Hudson Oaks?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor.
More or less 24 hours.
Street update, bond update, Crown Road. Gretchen.
Mayor, Council, just a quick overview of our street project. The contractor is XIT Paving and Construction. The streets included in the 2022 Street Improvements Project are Crown Road, Ranch House Road, Kings Gate, San Bass Road, San Bass Court, Trinity Court, Trinity Drive, Old Ford Road, Rich Haven, Pleasant Court, and Crested Butte? Did I say that right? Okay. So, those are our streets. The contract time on our project is 365 calendar days. The contractor began work on Crown Road in late November, and they've stayed pretty much on Crown all this time. The crew continues to work on this upgrade prep, putting in the concrete forms for the new concrete pavement. The, they're skipping the driveways for now to allow for access. They're gonna pour concrete tomorrow, and I think, again, on Friday. We've got about, maybe 1,000 feet of paved road, concrete road. We've started on the south end by Crown Valley Road. That's that entrance to the gated subdivision. We're moving north, so we're doing the northbound lane, all the way to 68 Crown. That's how far we've, we've gone with it. So, traffic continues to be southbound on Crown. The contractor's gonna add crews. We had a meeting with them last week to talk about the schedule, and they've agreed to revise the schedule to meet the contract time. I think there's been a, I think they're maybe, I don't know, four weeks maybe behind schedule, I think. But they're gonna add more crews, and the next streets that they're gonna work on are San Bass Court, Trinity Court, Trinity, Trinity Drive. Surveyors have been out there, so that's kind of where we are. Gretchen?
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you.
Drainage, Derek.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, as you recall, we've got two phases to the drainage project. We have the first phase, which has already been led, it's been bid out and awarded under contract. We expect them to be on the ground working around April 1st. Their notice to proceed has already been issued, but there's some, there's some time lag in getting materials on site. Culverts in particular are significantly delayed on getting deliveries. So, they're in the process of getting those and expect to be started around April 1st. That project includes the channel improvements, as you recall, on the east side of town, right along the east city limit line, going along the ranch property from about where Fox Hunt makes its current turn, all the way down to El Chico. That's kind of the, the large portion of that project and kind of the, the highlighted portion. It also includes a culvert replacement on Pleasant Ridge. There's a culvert there that's pretty significantly washed out and damaged, and so that'll be replaced. And then, a channel between San Bass and Squaw Creek and a culvert there that will be replaced. As you recall, the, a portion of the drainage project was actually bid with the street project, and that included a major culvert replacement under San Bass where Squaw Creek crosses, and a few other culverts and ditch work around town that are associated also with the street. The second phase of the drainage project is in design. It's a project, in your packet, it'll say 75%. It's now about 85% complete. I expect to have that done within the next couple of weeks and get ready and have it ready or close to ready to put out for bid, once we go through it with staff. That project includes the channel improvements, the channel that runs from Crown Point to the river. If you go by there, some of you know, some of you probably have noticed it, it's in pretty bad shape, put in back when, when Crown Point was originally put in. So, this project, the second phase of this project, we'll clean that out, regrade it, and get it where its flow capacity is, is where it should be. It also includes roadside ditch and culvert improvements along Squaw Creek between Chuck Wagon and Saddle Trail that goes into the, the community there. We haven't talked a lot about that in the past, but the homes on the west side of that road have water coming down into them. They're kind of, they slope down from the road onto their yards, and there's a masonry wall that separates the yards from the road. And those walls have or should have weep holes on the, on the bottom to allow drainage to come through, and they're covered up right now. So, it's under design right now, but our plan is to do some grading work on the ditch, because there's really no ditch there currently, and probably some culvert work on the downstream into that. And we'll look at it closer and make sure that, that whatever we do will be all-inclusive as far as taking care of that drainage. We'll also open up those drain holes on the wall, so. That's the intent there. The also included channel grading on the creek next to East Parker County Chamber, that's where the, the big drainage, the creek comes through and goes under the interstate. You'll notice that water pools there quite a bit and stays stagnant. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna do some grading there to clean that up and create a channelway for that to get down to the culvert and drain out. Grading culvert, culvert improvements on the northwest corner of Castle Mount Loop, that, if y'all know where that is, that's a little loop kind of right above the ridge, above Willow Park North Development that went in. The homes there have had trouble for some time. The, the water doesn't have anywhere to go. They actually, the homeowner there actually graded a little ditch that's probably helped quite a bit, but we're gonna refine that and extend it and take it down to where it runs into the channel that, that drains the top side of that ridge. There's also a channel that, that was put in with Willow Park North that, that actually traces along the top of that ridge, and it's, over time, it's eroded out. It's pretty sandy up there, and so it hasn't held up very well. It drains down to a little inlet and then into a pipe that drains down into the, one of the new culverts, or a couple of the new culverts down there. So, we're gonna go in and re, recover that ditch and put some kind of ground cover, probably sod, to maintain it so it doesn't erode out like that in that sandy condition. Regrading and erosion improvements on the, in the ditch on the ridge above, oh, I'm sorry. Ditch grading and culvert improvements along Vista and Live Oak, that's, that's a pretty extensive area, oh, from about, almost from Indian Camp down along Vista. There's quite a, quite a few homes in that area that are having issues. The drainage, it's another situation where the ditch is not really refined anymore or defined anymore. And so, we're gonna clean the ditches, do some culvert work, and take it down to the creek where it can drain. And then, on Live Oak, just around the corner from that, there's a similar situation. And the other one is along, or on Chuck Wagon, just off the, the westbound access road. If you recall, there's a big rock riprap area with a big black plastic culvert there that the city put in several years ago, just to, to try to, to maintain some drainage there until something else could be done. So, we'll be replacing a driveway culvert there and doing some, some grading to get that on around into the, the access road right away. And so, you can tell, there's quite a few more items. So, this Phase Two project, just the scope of it will be larger than the, than the Phase One project, but I still expect we'll be below budget on the overall drainage project. So, we'll see how the bids come in, but that's, that's what's expected. Well, that's the drainage. Questions about that?
And you do have that entrance to, is it State? State?
Saddle Ridge. Saddle Trail.
Saddle Trail. Do you have a design completion on that, or something you can share information on?
Well, it's probably gonna be a culvert lip size there. We're looking at that currently. I mean, that's, that's what our expectation is. We're not quite finalized on that, but that's what I would expect.
Would that prevent the water from going into the, the yards that's on the?
Well, I think, well, there, there are two things there. So, the culvert there that, that causes it to back up, and, and, and that's a fairly steep area. I mean, there's quite a bit of slope there. So, even the backup wouldn't account for all of that water getting into the yards, but that would be a port, that would be a, a part of it. The fact that there's no ditch there is really, you know, water comes down off the street from the north side, north end, and it has nowhere to go except off the street and into those yards. It comes up along the wall and makes its way in there. And also, I think, some coming from the front side that can't get out because of the, because the bottom of the wall is covered.
Would, would a concrete channel work over there?
Well, that's another thing we're looking at as we speak. That's kind of the last part of the design we're doing, but it, concrete is always better than, than grass. It'll depend on what kind of grades we can get on the ditch. If we can, if we can grade it adequately where we don't have to worry about it eroding and sloughing off, then, then a typical earth channel would be fine, but, but we'll know that very shortly, and that may be something we look at.
I, I think we should consider, because that's been a problem for years, and probably before I got here. You know, I, I think if we could do a concrete channel within reason, that probably would not be the worst
Right.
...use of the funds. I'd like to solve the problem and then, and be done with it. I'd, I'd like to solve the problem and then, and be done with it.
Well, the issue with dirt or, or grass channels is that they tend to silt up over time. So that's why you've got the problem you've got. So that's certainly something.
How long on average does a typical, like a grass channel hold up? Like, what are we?
Well, I mean, it.
I know there's so many variables that can be, that's obviously asking for a huge generality when it comes to that.
Right.
But, you know, like you said, if we're looking at something that, you know, the next council's gonna address in five to 10 years as compared to whatever else, what are you, your thoughts on longevity?
Yeah, I think it's a maintenance issue. I mean, it's, it, if it's maintained well, it, it could go well beyond that. But if it's not, you know, then, then that timeframe or less probably. So the five to 10 years are less.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a matter of how well it's maintained, what goes on upstream of it. I mean, if there's development upstream, which is probably not terribly likely in this case, but if there is and you've got, you've got, you know, disturbed earth up ahead where, where it's sending sediment down, that, those are locations where you tend to have a lot of problems. But it, but it's a maintenance thing.
Okay.
The, the concrete would obviously be much less maintenance in that regard. But they have to be maintained also, for them to last.
Derek, I have a question. The channel improvement between Crown Point Boulevard and, and the Clear Fork of the Trinity, is this gonna help address the pooling of water on Crown Point when you get a big rainstorm? Because I mean, it, it gets a foot or two deep right there when it hits that channel.
It, it will help the water get beyond that covert under Crown Point faster. And, and so the water level there would be lower. So I would expect that it would. You know, again, there, there are a lot of factors causing, related to that issue as well. But we'll certainly be moving the water beyond that covert much better than we are now. And so I would expect to see some improvement.
And this is not gonna impact any way where we're gonna be building the new wastewater treatment plant, correct? It's gonna be working with our design for that?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and in fact, a, a large portion of that site drains into that channel and will remain that way when this is done. But it, but we're not really changing the, the direction of flow.
Good.
And we'll be tiny.
Perfect.
Next.
Speaking of wastewater?
Yep.
Wastewater plant? So the wastewater plant, the design has been completed for a while. It's been under review. We have to get two agency approvals for this. We have to get the, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, who is really the regulatory agency for these things, and, and also the Texas Water Development Board as the funding agency. They perform an engineering review as well. The TCEQ approved it some time ago. I think I've mentioned at least a couple of updates that I've made here that that was done. The Water Development Board made comments shortly before Christmas, I believe. And they weren't terribly significant, but it's taken a little bit of time to get those resolved, but we've taken care of those. It's been submitted back for review now. I think you, I think it was in your packet that it would be submitted yesterday. It was. We went over it with, with staff Monday, that Monday morning. And went back, finished accumulating all the data and everything. It's under review. We talked to the Water Development Board. They told us they expected a 30-day turnaround on that. So I think I put 45 to be safe in your, in your packet. Them meeting a, a deadline is fairly rare, so. But, but they said it'd be about 30 days. So you've got about, on a project this size, it would be about a five-week bid time. So I would expect, once we get that approval, we'd be looking at about a five-week, a little over a month bid time, probably another couple of months of executing contracts and, and preparing for pre-construction, and then a notice to proceed. So as I said in your packet, that would put us in the neighborhood of July of 2024 for a final completion with a 365. You know, we'll do everything we can to beat that time. I know there's, Pat had, had brought up the issue of the lease with the existing plant. And there is also, when we talk about a July completion date on the new plant, you have to consider the decommissioning of the old plant too. So I think it's wise, as Pat said, to, to be prepared to request an extension on that. But, but we should be, we should have the plant complete in that timeframe. I really believe that'll take place.
So the delays have been the Water Development Board review?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it, it, there are a lot of moving parts to this. But there are environmental assessments, those all took, we talked about those ad nauseam prior to today. But, but yeah, the review is really the, what's been the, the holdup so far. I really expect, I think I mentioned this too, early on about this, and, and I expected the TCEQ, their review time on a project like this used to be upwards of a year. And they, they got it done in about 60 days. So they really got it through fast, but, but the Water Development Board has been a little slower.
Is there different criteria for, I mean, just some simple, if TCEQ approves it and they're the permitting agency?
Well, oddly enough, they're not, so. But they, I mean, a lot, well, I don't want to go into a lot of minutia, but, but some of the comments, a good portion of them were comments that, that were addressed by saying the TCEQ has approved this. And so that's kind of some of the things we're dealing with. But, but that process, I think, is, is nearing completion. It'll be in a, a bidding construction process.
When do, when do you think they'll start the bidding?
If they hold to their timeframe, we'd be looking at early April. Month, a little over a month.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Budget update, new city hall cost and funding recommendations, Mr. Grimes.
Yes. At the, at the request of Leah and a few others, but formerly with Leah, she wanted to know what the cost would be for the moving expenses. Obviously, we didn't, everything in the commission was not included in the budget because we didn't foresee this when we were putting the budget together this summer. So just real basic, our base rent, and this is just through the fiscal year, so this is through September 30. Our base rent will be $140,000. Our moving expenses, we still don't have all the invoices in on that, but we're estimating it will not be over $50,000. And I think it's gonna be a little less than that, actually. And then there were some utility costs of, of $15,000. That's a part of our base, that's part of our lease contract that we pay out every month for a total of $205,000. The only out-of-budget expenses, if you will, will be the base rent and the moving expenses. Clearly, we had utilities budgeted for 516 Ranch House, for example, electricity, gas, whatnot. So we had those utilities budgeted. Any other utilities would be an in-and-out to us. Our lease says that the landlord will assess us a fee for water and wastewater. Well, we're the ones charging for water and wastewater. So whatever they charge us, we'll just pay ourselves back. So it's more of an in-and-out, although Jake will tell you in a, an accounting term, that's not an in-and-out. So there's a couple of strategies that we can employ to, to cover these unbudgeted expenses. The one strategy that Jake and I are recommending is that we do, you authorize us to prepare a, a budget amendment at the next meeting to... Now, keep in mind internally, we have already been tracking these through our software. So when we tell you $50,000, we can give you the invoices and tell you everything. We, as soon as the lease was signed, we set up a rent, if you will, line item in the general fund to pay for that, so we can cover those things. We would need you to formally allow us to amend the budget to do that. We did this as just a kind of, until we can get together and figure out how much everything's gonna cost. But the big question is how are we gonna pay for this through September 30? I think you guys are getting tired of me telling you every month that our sales tax is doing well. Some of the text messages back is, you know, oh, boy, another sales tax report. Our February sales tax was up 55% from February of '22. It is far and away the highest sales tax collection ever in Willow Park. It was nearly a quarter of a million dollars. To put that in context, when I started here, we didn't, we didn't get a million dollars in one year. So this is clearly good news for us. What we would recommend you do is you amend the budget, and then we adjust the sales tax projections accordingly. I have us projected at bringing in well over $2 million for sales tax for this fiscal year. We budgeted 1.72 in sales tax for this fiscal year. And so that would be our strategy recommendation for council. I would need a motion, if y'all agree with that, I would need a motion that would allow us to amend the budget and present to you at the next meeting. And then we would amend, you would adopt the two-line items for moving expenses and rent, and then allow us to adjust our revenue expectations for sales tax. I'm open to any other suggestions that you guys have as far as how to pay for these unbudgeted expenditures. Jake's here to, to talk it through as well, so the floor is yours.
Do you have a motion for that, to make the motion to adopt?
I didn't put it in the packet because I, I just didn't know what you guys wanted to do. I didn't.
I can make the motion. So you, to, just to confirm, you do not believe that we need to use reserves. You're proposing that the best option is to adjust the revenue?
Yes.
Based on where we stand now?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare a, a budget amendment to revise revenues and revise expenses for the new rent.
Everybody get that?
You're satisfied with that?
You get that, Tony? Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Pick one.
We have a motion and a second. That's a good job. Mr. Grimes?
Need to vote, sir.
I'm not through yet.
Yes, sir.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, development and permit updates. Mr. Fundabert?
Counsel, this is a, we are working, we installed myGov software, I think it was around April. And so you will be seeing on a quarterly basis a complete development report, permits, evaluations. All of that'll be coming once, and we're, we're getting in on that timeframe. Tonight, you have in front of you what has occurred in '21 and '22. And as you can see, we're down a little bit. As you look at the, at the first page, new homes, 104 in '21. We went down to 31 in '22, and I think we all know the reason of that. Interest rates started going up, and so things started declining in the home business. New commercial, we had six in '21. We have eight in '22. We're not seeing any, really any problems on commercial development right now in Willow Park. It's, it's holding steady, and we have, having discussions, and we think that we're gonna be fine in that area. The multifamily, we had 140 in '21. In '22, we had 110. That's the canvas coming in, what's making that one, 110 most. As you look on down into new commercial, valuation of commercial construction, you can see in '21, we took in around $29 million in valuation. And then in '22, last year, we took in close, a little over $61 million valuation. And so it is up there. And we go to the second page, you can see, I can discuss that a little bit more. In fact, let's just go to that second page and discuss what took place over there in '22. And you can see 19 million came in from the canvas. And, and then the ambulatory surgery center, 4 million, I won't name them all, you can see it, which comes up to that $61 million, $35,751 valuation. And these are projects that are still continuing, we're inspecting. And some of these, and we're medical buildings, just last week, we received finish-out plans for some, for one of these medical buildings. And so for those sort of things, that's why we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna see a decline in commercial. I don't know about the housing. We'll see what happens on that. That's a nationwide situation anyway. So we have, those are the numbers that are coming in, and then we have been talking to other developers as well on commercial property. So we'll wait and see and how that plays out. As far as new sewer connections, in '21, we had 50, and in '22, we had 22, or 20. And again, that's the housing situation dropping off there like a mess. So those are brief numbers for you, counsel. Be glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Item number 12, discuss and take action to consider and take action on authorizing the opt-in of the City of Willow Park in the settlements reached by the Texas Attorney General with Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documentation necessary to participate in the settlements, including execution of the subdivision participation forms.
Pat?
Counsel, as you're aware, we're, this is, I think, the second or third opioid settlement that we have been offered to participate in. We've done two previous. We haven't gotten any money yet, but they keep sending us forms to, to distribute the money. So typical government bureaucracy. But this is a little quicker route. They, so we have to approve this by April the 18th. And if we approve it or opt-in, we then get to participate in the settlement fund. The amount that Willow Park will be receiving, city will receive in direct allocation, so money sent to us, $25,195. But the participation that we can participate in grants, it'll be, for this region, about $53 million. And so typically, the, the way they've been structuring these is the city has to have an opioid nexus to spend the money in. And that's a very obtuse and ambiguous definition. But literally, it can mean everything from police expenses to expenses you may have for various drug programs. You can have some vehicle, I mean, you, you name it. If we can think it up, we'll spend it. So again, the option we have is not to participate if we intend to sue directly ourselves and hire attorney, hire me to sue the, these, this is Walmart, Walgreens. I can assure you, they're gonna fight us tooth and nail. And so the likelihood of us not, of us suing outside of this is not very strong. So I would encourage us to participate and opt-in to this. If you have any questions, I'd gladly answer them.
So we've had two previous incidents?
We have.
So this may be, you think this is the end?
You know, I, I don't think so. I think there's a continuing effort by the Texas Attorney General's office to bring justice for the abuse of opioids. And of course, you know, you've got the biggest, some of the biggest pharmacies, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart here paying roughly $500 million in money. So maybe get down to the end, but I think they'll continue to push forward. I don't have any more. But as you see, the direct payouts are getting smaller and the grant pool's getting bigger. And again, they set the rules of how we can participate. So I'd say we've probably got the best settlement early on because we've got more direct allocation. And then trying to staff like, figure out ways to supply for grants. Grants, you know, there are no free lunches in this, in this world. So anytime you seek a grant, you know, sometimes your, your overhead and, and reporting costs can be as much as you get. So anyway, it is, I think the option is, again, if you don't participate, we'll get nothing. And we're not gonna sue as an individual city.
Okay, do we have any questions for Pat, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a move that we participate in the settlement as presented by the city attorney.
We have a motion? Any, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Item number 13, to form committee to build, construct, plan a police station. Item number 13, to form committee to build, construct, plan a police station.
So at the last meeting, Mayor Pro Tim Young requested that we put this on the agenda to form a committee. This is in anticipation of the ESD purchasing the current public safety building. I believe they meet tomorrow night, so we may have some clarity on what that situation looks like. But in the event that they decide to build, or, excuse me, to buy the public safety building, we will be required to go out and build a police station. As of right now, we have no plans, designs, drawings on just a police station. What we have is a public safety building, and those plans are probably five or six years old, and you see the fruits of those plans over off of the current facility. So I think Leah's suggestion is warranted. If the ESD decides to buy the existing city hall at 516 Ranch House and build a fire station, then this is a moot committee, and it'll be disbanded about as fast as it got put together. But in the interim of that, I think it would be advantageous for us to put some kind of committee together. Leah has shared some ideas with me. I'd like for you to share those with council and start the conversation.
Well, I'll clarify that what we have with the ESD, taking essentially our fire department because of the ESD, is even if they choose not to purchase that building and we keep our police department in that building, I feel that this committee that I've requested needs to assess what the needs of the police department are as they expand fully into that, what is now the public safety building. So I think the idea of knowing what we're looking at for our police department, not just for the next two years, but for five to 20, is what we're talking about. What is it that our police department needs for Willow Park now that we are now having to fund our fire department? So that's my idea behind it. I personally would love to see, if you're just wanting me to name names of who, obviously, I would love to see our police chief, Chief Ellis, Assistant Chief Franklin on that committee. I'm just going to say, I'd love to see Councilmember Gilliland because of his experience in that area. I think he would be wonderful. And my final suggestion, other than potential citizens, would be some of our neighboring communities. Weatherford, for example, has just gone through the experience of building, PSB, so I think it would be nice if we could get some of their expertise and things they learned and wanted to share with us. So that's my idea of what that committee needs to do. As we work through what's going to happen with the ESD transfer as far as facilities, I think it would be good for us to have in the next couple of months, a good idea of what our police department needs, so, and locations and everything like that to be included in that.
How many are going to be on the board? Yes, that's.
On the committee?
Yeah, or on the committee.
Well, I'm going to tell you, we always like the number five.
You've got one, two, three, four.
I've got four in here. Keep in mind, if we have, if, I think we could probably add one more council member without violating a quorum.
Correct.
In theory, you could add another council member and the mayor and still not violate quorum. Would that be correct, Pat?
The mayor doesn't count towards quorum, so how many are you talking about? We have three.
Okay.
I'd like to be considered on that if we can.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion for.
Do you want to chair the committee, sir?
I'd love to chair it.
Do you want to motion naming individuals or just forming the?
Do you want to form the committee and then take, and then just do that at the next meeting?
Yeah, that would be my thought. Well.
I mean.
Put together the list of recommended appointees for the committee for the next meeting. How's that? I'll make a motion that we form a committee to research the needs of our police department, and at a future meeting, establish the committee members.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item, last item, to award a base bid schedule A through D for the wastewater affluent line to B&amp;L Construction Company for a total of $1.383,285. I think everyone's familiar with that.
Derek, excuse me.
Yeah, as you recall, we made a, or you made a contingent award the last time, or award of the affluent line portion and the lift station portion, just two separate contractors, as they were separate bid schedules within the bid. The Texas Water Development Board felt like that was kind of an in-run around the competitive bidding requirements, and while they didn't flat-out turn it down, they were going to make it very difficult to do that. So rather than go through that and delay things, my recommendation was just to award it to the second bidder. He bid both. It's more, the whole reason for the original suggestion was that it was about $160,000 less overall than it would have been to award it to the second bidder, but I don't think it would have gone through, and so I think it's worth going ahead and awarding to the second bidder. B&amp;L Construction are the ones that did the bankhead sewer lift station and line across the interstate, very good contractor, and they've done a good job so far on that. So our recommendation is to go ahead and make that award and get the ball rolling on that, so we can move it down the road. And that total was, excuse me, I've got it here somewhere, $1,383,285. That's their bid to cover all of the line work and the lift station.
And we've notified the other bidder that?
Yes. I've talked to both bidders, and both of them are okay with the process.
Very good. Okay, any other questions, or do we have a motion to accept this, please?
Pat, you want?
Mayor, I would suggest, Brian and I spoke, I think we need to rescind the previous award to, so I would, my proposed motion would be moved to rescind the award of construction contracts to JRM Construction Services LLC and RK Construction LLC for the wastewater affluent line project as paid at the January 24th, 21st.
So we need to rescind that bid.
Rescind it and award the contract to.
And then after you've rescinded it, then you award, make a separate motion to award to B&amp;.
Did everyone get the wording on the rescind?
I'll make a motion that we rescind the award of the bid to JRM Construction and RK Construction. That was the January meeting, and I'll make a motion that we award the new, the contract to B&amp;L Construction for a total of $1,383,285.
Can we do that in one motion?
Sure.
Very good. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, real quick, is this covered under the funding-wise? We've already taken care of all this through the applications, through the TCEQ and all that that we did earlier for this, or is this? I was just wondering, because we talked about those CL FRF funds and the difference, is that something that we could possibly use those funds to cover the 160,000 that we were off by, or?
You certainly could do that. The funding is in place through the Texas Water Development Board for all of it.
Right.
And it's within the budget, but you can absolutely, they don't care if you funnel some of your own or other pools of money into it.
Okay.
That's totally up to you guys.
Just curious about covering that, that difference from bidder A and B to just B now, so.
But we would have, we would know in April or so, when we're bidding the entire wastewater project, whether we're.
Right.
Budgeting.
Right.
Because if the Water Development Board funding, if we come under, are allotted, then it doesn't help us for anything. We can't use that for anything else, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Greg with a second.
Greg had a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Mayor and council comments? Any council comments?
I just want to thank the staff for a great job getting us into this building. Good job.
Anyone else?
Great facilities, and I think the ribbon cutting went well today. It was a big turnout, very big turnout.
Anyone else? I forgot to thank one person today.
Oh, who am I going to?
My wife.
She likes Ruth Chris.
She's at dinner, she said, you forgot to thank one person, and I looked at her and I said, you. So anyway, thank, appreciate everyone, the council, the staff, I named everybody today. Great job on everybody's, to get it looking like it is now, and I appreciate it very much. And thank the council for making a move to this, and it was much, much needed. So thank you. Mr. Grimes?
Well, first of all, I want to thank my wife.
Suck up.
A couple announcements real quick. City Secretary Crystal Dozier obviously was not here. She gave birth to a son, Weldon Dozier, Saturday morning, don't get me, I don't know the specs, but Saturday morning, and so baby and mom are recovering nicely over at, in Weatherford, and so we wish them joy and well wishes, and can't wait to see Crystal soon. I want to thank the citizens of Willow Park for allowing us the opportunity to work in a facility like this. I cannot tell you the difference in attitudes of people that work here. It is, it is really cool, I was telling somebody this morning, it's really cool to see coworkers come in early for work, have coffee together, sure, there's some personal conversations going on, but you would be amazed how many, how many of those conversations turn into, I've got, I've got to do this today, or where are you doing on this today? Those conversations continue throughout the day. It's nice to have an office that not everybody can hear me. That's another positive thing, just personally speaking. Candy Scott has worked for the city for the better part of 200 years. She has never had her own office. I think in a quarter of a century of employment with the city of Willow Park, she's never had her own office, and that is Candy's office right there. So this has been a great transition, a great move. I do want to thank Tony and Rose specifically, they did yeoman's work on this. I think I want to get Tony to negotiate my next car purchase. She did a great job of keeping the expenses down and getting every, she got contractors to work on Sunday, not once, not twice, but three times. That's almost unheard of. And so, and Rose did a great job of getting all the media and getting all the technology things. We've still got some back orders things going on, but all in all, thank you, council, for allowing us an opportunity to work in a professional environment and serve our citizens better.
Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion that we adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.[1789.86]